Good morning. The meeting will come to order, and if we can all stand and have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The records show that all the commissioners are present except for Chair Mutertes, who I understand will be back next meeting. Are there any agenda changes?
Yes, I'd like to note that items E2 and E3, actually item E4 on the agenda, have been withdrawn. So there's no need, that's for Kern-Houghton appeals of 2016 537 and 541. They have been withdrawn.
Okay. So we'll have the public comment period. I appreciate the fact that everybody came out on such a stormy day. This public comment period is for any item, or anything that is not an item on this agenda but that's within the purview of the planning commission. Comments are limited to five minutes apiece, and please have the floor if you have any public comments. There being no such public comment, we'll move to the consent agenda. First, the approval of the minutes of the November 2nd, 2017 meeting. Are there any suggested changes to those minutes? On the consent agenda, we don't have to have a vote, right?
Well, what you would do is if there's any changes you want to make, you pull that item from the consent calendar, and then, for example, if you, I understand you have some concerns about the minutes for November 29th, you move to pull, or you just pull that one from the agenda, and then if there's no other discussion, there would just be a motion to approve the consent calendar without that one.
Okay. And approval of minutes from the November 9th, 2017, planning commission meeting?
Well, I wouldn't say changes, but there's a couple typos.
We should have Karen Sisk be restored to District 5.
That's all of them.
Oh, I only noticed that one. Yes.
There's no, it's just left to me.
I missed that.
Aren't you at large?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Rooster.
Carl Stoughton's name is spelled T-O-M on page two. I'm pretty sure Chris Nieber's name isn't spelled right on page three, but I don't know how to spell it right. So we may have to let that one go unless somebody else knows. Other than that, no.
Now, those corrections can be done on, as part of the consent calendar?
Well, I think since you've made the changes, what we would do then take a separate vote on.
A separate vote?
Yeah.
Once we're done with the consent calendar.
Well, again, the normal process would be to pull the minutes from November 9th, November 29th. If there are no changes to any other item, they would, someone would make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar, and then you'd go into the changes you would want to make to those other minutes.
Okay. So on the minutes for November 29th, I have a problem. Does anybody else? What I'm seeing is that the resolution that came out of that meeting properly reflects that we presented alternatives to the board without any clear preference, and the way the minutes read, it is as if we have independently presented two motions to the board with a recommendation for adoption. My suggestion is, since my understanding was that Chair Mutertes did not, only voted in favor of presenting alternatives to the board, that I think, I'd like to, I'd like to pull these minutes for consideration to the next meeting when Chair Mutertes is expected to be here. The resolution itself, I'm going to read the beat here, 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 therefore resolved, that the planning commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors, one, certify the EIR for the Medical Cannabis Cultivation and Commerce Ordinance Project, and, two, approve Project 2014-064, an amendment titled 17, zoning ordinance rescinding in full existing Chapter 17.95 and replacing with a new chapter 17.95, medical cannabis cultivation and commerce, being one or the other of the previously drafted ban sent to the Board of Supervisors on October 2nd, 2017, or the regulatory ordinance preferred by staff and amended this date based on the following findings. Now, that reflects what I understand we did at that meeting.
Mr. Chair, maybe we simply say the result of these three motions, or these two motions that passed was, and then we add that language. Probatim.
All right. Anybody have a problem with doing that?
Not as long as we just track the resolution. I mean, I thought it was okay the way it was, because it was, it accurately reflected the votes.
I don't think Chair Mutertes ever voted in favor of the ban without, I could be corrected.
She did. She did. Three or two.
Okay, okay. Well, then, do I have a motion to, to approve the minutes, the consent calendar, with the exception of the minutes for November 9th and November 29th, and then we can move on to taking care of those?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, so the minutes of November 9th, once again, Commissioner Rooster, you have the correction of Stoughton's spelling and the addition of District 5 by Commissioner Sisk. Was there anything else?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? As corrected?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. So the minutes of November 29th, I would then like to keep the language the way it is in the current minutes with the addition suggested by the planning director, so it reflects the resolution as it was signed.
And also, also correct Mr. Stoughton's spelling of his name on page one again.
Okay. And Commissioner Sisk need to get, have her district added there too?
Yes.
Yes, I know.
Right. Do you want to hear that language again, that the, as I understand it, the planning director is suggesting that we insert another paragraph after all the motions incorporating the language that was in the actual resolution? Is that what you're suggesting? Do I have a motion in that regard?
I'd move to approve it as amended.
A second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on to the public hearings. The first item on the agenda is the extension of time to 2010-005 tentative subdivision tract map for Novogradak. So we'll first hear from the planning department.
Good morning. As just stated, you have before you an extension of time request for the Sierra Parkway properties previously Novogradic Investment, Inc. Back on August 23rd, 2012, the planning commission approved subdivision tract map 2010-005, allowing 15 single-family residential lots and three community septic system lots. Initially, that was approved for 36 months. Subsequent to that, they were eligible for one, two-year state automatic extension under Assembly Bill 1116. As we all know, the subdivision map act allows four, six years of discretionary extensions, and because it is a subdivision tract map, the county requires a good faith effort finding in order to approve the extension. So in respect to the good faith effort, evidence provided to us indicates that the grading and improvement plans have been completed, not yet submitted to the county public works department, but they are completed and ready to go. Community wastewater system has been designed, again, not submitted to the county for initial permit, but it is designed and ready for submittal. We did receive two letters of concerns regarding the property being poorly managed and over-vegetated, stating that dead trees were creating a potential fire hazard. With the approval of an extension, obviously, the owners will be allowed to continue on, which will require them to properly manage the property and remove those trees for several purposes, one of which will be for the improvement plans and the grading. They do have a timber harvest conversion plan prepared and ready to submit for CAL FIRE. As we know, everything is so time-sensitive that literally everything needs to be in place before you start submitting permit applications to the local jurisdictions, because all of those permits will come with expiration dates. So everything kind of has to be in place and ready to go before you actually start submitting for those, those applications for those permits. Under SEQA, we did, the planning commission did approve a mitigated negative declaration with the original application approval, and there have been no changes in circumstances to necessitate a recirculation of the environmental document. Therefore, we're relying on the original mitigated neg-deck. In conclusion, there's been a lot of work that's been done on this project. Substantial investment has been made, and therefore, the planning, planning department is recommending that you approve a three-year extension of time.
I'd like to mention for the audience is that, that's the presentation of the planning department. The applicants will have 15 minutes to, to discuss, and then we will have public comment available then pertaining to this particular item. Are there questions from the commissioner for the department?
Yes. With respect to the community wastewater plan or design, the way I read the 2012 resolution that approved this, that was already designed at that time. Is that right?
You are correct.
Okay. And the question before the commission is whether to approve an extension of time from that date, and we have to find, there were good faith efforts to meet the conditions of approval.
Correct.
How is it that something that was done before the plan was approved in 2012 should count towards a good faith effort since then to meet the conditions on the map?
Well, I think that'll be up to your discretion. So this project was actually approved prior to the approval that we're discussing now. So the map was approved, and they, they actually, for failure to extend it, the map expired. So they actually had to come back in with a new application and, and submit a whole new application process for reapproval. So you are correct, and some of that was already done prior to the, the current tentative map that we're looking at.
One other question, and this has to do with the removal of the dead trees.
Yes.
Is there anything in the conditions that requires that?
That requires the removal of dead trees?
Yeah.
No, not specifically.
So where is that, where is the requirement coming from, if there is one?
Well, it's not specific to dead trees. The removal of trees is a mitigation measure that was applied indicating, see if I can find it here. I've got search glasses. The mitigation measure was relative to the timber manage, or the timber harvest conversion plan.
Is that mitigation measure, AGFS-1?
Sounds about right. Any trees that are removed to facilitate future development shall not be done during the nesting season, da-da-da-da-da-da. In conjunction is to occur occurring this period of time, that's the wrong one, I believe, hang on. Oh, it's the first one. Prior to removal of any trees, the landowner must contact the local CAL FIRE area forester for specific information as, as to what may be required for the project site. CAL FIRE may require a landowner to apply for a timber conversion permit or exemption is file, or exemption and file a timber harvest plan. So before they can do any grading or installation of any infrastructure, the tree removal will need to occur. They can't remove the trees until they get the permit from CAL FIRE, but again, they're not ready to do that level of work until they have their permits in place for the installation of the septic system and the, the other infrastructure, as well as the grading permit.
Well, if we, if you have dead trees now that are in danger of falling on the next door house, it can't be that they have to wait until these other permits are done.
No, they don't.
Can't they get a permit from, from CAL?
I suppose they could. They could go before CAL FIRE and get a permit to remove those trees regardless of what they do with this.
With everything else, I mean, as far as the tree removal in order to put houses down.
I think what I'm trying to say is, yes, you're right, tree removal is necessary, and they should be maintaining the property for a fire hazard, but in fact, if, if they have approval of the subdivision, then you absolutely know it will be done, because they will be doing the timber harvest plan, removing those trees for the purpose of installation of.
But there can be two different permits with, with the state as far as removal of trees.
I don't know. Perhaps maybe the applicant's agent can touch on that a little bit further.
Get back.
I would assume it can be all done in the same permit.
Well, yes, but if we're, if we're saying that you have to hold off on the permits until all the other permits are right.
I'm not saying, well, I'm not saying that they can't go get a permit today absent or beside all of this to remove the trees. It's probably a matter of convenience.
And I would think that it would be just a matter of a neighbor being concerned about jeopardy to a neighbor's property.
Oh, absolutely.
Totally separate from the subdivision map plan, these people exist as neighbors.
Oh, absolutely.
So, well, let's, unless you have further questions, we can hear from the applicant.
Just so I am clear on it, there's, there's nothing in here that we're being asked to approve that requires tree removal. The only time that they have to remove trees under the way this works is when they have to remove them anyway to do their project.
Correct.
Grading, and then they may have to get a.
They know for a fact that trees will be, will have to be removed for the installation of the infrastructure and the grading, therefore, they will be required to get a permit from the state.
What the neighbor's concerned now is that the trees are not being removed.
Correct.
So I think we're sort of running down a rabbit hole here. The, the map conditions are those things that are required at the time that they record the final map. So we have a separate issue associated with dead trees on the property.
And is that?
They would have, I mean, and the only time you enforce those conditions is when they come in for a final map. So to get them to maintain the trees, you know, remove the dead trees, prior to that, would not be an issue associated with the map itself. I don't know if there are other laws, and I would hope that maybe the property owner, after hearing this discussion, would take whatever effort necessary to protect their own resources as well as neighbors' resources. I don't think there's any way that we can condition a map to do something that's required now by other, other laws or codes or standards, other than that, that's specifically related to the recording of the final map.
Okay, well, let, I'd suggest we hear from the applicant and go from there. Is the applicant here?
Hello.
Hello. If you could.
Hello, thank you.
If you could, with your, with your good hand, sign in.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you very much. As mentioned, we're seeking the three-year extension to move forward with this project. With regard to the trees, we're not waiting. Any hazard trees or dead and dying trees, we're in contract now with a logger, and just because we had a little bit of snow has slowed us down a little bit, but we're not waiting. The timber harvest for the, for the infrastructure, for the road, is a separate matter. But we're, we've actually signed a contract with Rich Stevens, and we're cleaning up the entire 15 acres. The reason this project has taken so long is the high cost of the infrastructure. If you look at the map, it's a three separate parcels, 15 acres total, but it requires 1,600 foot of roadway through the center of it. These lots need to sell for approximately $100,000 each, and today's market for this, for these parcels would be around $50,000. When we add up the cost to make the improvements to, for this subdivision, it's about $50,000 per lot. So that brings us up to about $750,000 investment. You add all the other engineering, taxes, and so on and so forth, this is a million-dollar project. So that's why this project has taken so long. We could not market these lots anywhere near 100,000. In '07, as you, as you folks realize, the real estate market just went off the cliff, and it really sort of hit the bottom in 2013, and we've slowly been kind of coming back up. It's just been in the last, oh, say, two years that we've been, we can see where these parcels would, would pay for itself, you know, pay for the improvements. So we're in contract, we're moving forward. Septic has been designed, grading has, has been designed. We're now just waiting for the weather to, to improve a little bit to move this project forward.
So as I understand it, right now, you see the project as a feasible project, and you are taking steps to do it, because that's our, our job right now is to make sure you're having a good faith effort to progress the project, no matter what the value of the property is.
Yes, I understand, yeah. Your, your concern is less to do with the, the valuations. Yes, we can see that this is a feasible project. We're more excited today than we've been, I'd say, in the last 10 years practically. And the dead and dying trees, we are aware of a couple of neighbors. I've actually gone out there and walked the perimeter and marked the trees that need to come down, and this has been the beetle, bark beetle kill trees that, that we have a concern with.
And are you in communication with the neighbors as far as whether they agree that you've marked all the trees that need to be?
Yes, yes. In fact, twice, being out there on the property, the neighbor saw me and actually came out. So I've had communication with both neighbors.
Great, great.
You said the septic was designed and the road was designed. When was that?
I might have to have Steve comment on that. He's the engineering firm that's, that's doing that. Septic was designed, was it 2012? No?
It was before that.
It was before that. I'm not exactly.
What have you done in the last couple of years to show them that you're improving, that you're working on this, I guess?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
What have you done in the last couple of years? It sounds like everything was done a long time ago, correct?
Correct.
So it's just been sitting there for the last couple of years, waiting for the value to go up?
Well, not necessarily, no. We've, we've been trying to move it forward with the timber harvest, but we had a problem with getting a logger that would do it. The bark beetle has been a big, big problem. The mills, you know, are full, and just finding somebody to get out there and log the property. So that's been the problem.
When did you sign this contract with, is it Rich Stevens, the logger?
About two months ago.
And it's a signed, written contract?
Yes.
Well, the Sisk is asking, I think we're all asking, what exactly have you done? That's one item. You've signed a contract for logging. What else like that have you done in the last couple of years?
Grading with SJB Consulting.
A contract for grading?
Yes.
Or the grading design?
Grading design.
And you got a timber conversion permit?
We've marked the trees and, and ready to move forward. We haven't filed anything, because I think we only get a year on that. So we're, we're ready to go on all this, yes.
Okay, but it's been prepared for submittal?
Yes.
So what, what else, what else do you need to do before you, say, submit the timber harvest conversion request? As I understand it, why all these permits need to be applied for in a coordinated fashion, and I'm not sure what's left for you to get together?
Water, CCWD water line needs to, I think that, that needs to be submitted and approved to push that through. But we're basically ready to push everything through and start going on it. And we can see where the, the valuations make sense.
So do you need three years?
Yeah, I think so. Think we do. I mean, we're going to move forward right away, but to, to allow for the amount of work that still needs to be done into it, and then to see the valuations continue to rise. And I know that's not the answer for you folks, but yeah, we would like the three years.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Tyrus, for the record, can you state your name in association with?
Yeah, thank you. Tyrus Kassravi. My business is Sierra Escape, and I've been retained to, to manage the, the project.
Anything else right now? You get another chance if there's a need. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So are there any public comments with regard to?
Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's two of us, sorry.
Yeah, great. You have the rest of the 15 minutes.
Morning. My name is Steve Buckley. I'm owner of SJB Consulting. We are the plans preparers for the Novogradic project. Ty was, has been retained recently to be project manager, and he's got the real estate experience. We're the ones that are dealing with the septic system design, the grading plan, trying to coordinate all these efforts and that kind of thing. So any questions you have regarding those things, you can certainly talk to me about it. Before I get started talking about that, though, I want to, I want to talk for a minute just about this project. This has been a long project. As Gina said, they, they got their original approval in '09, was it? And, and their surveyor died without. And, and their surveyor died without asking for an extension on the map, so the map expired. So we had to start all over again. And then we got everything through and we got approval to move forward. And then the real estate market took a dump. And then as we were trying to pick that back up, the beetle infestation came in. And, you know, the upper country has really been hit hard through these things and, and has brought down the, the whole building economy up there, as Ty mentioned. And, and so the valuations have not been there. So our task for the Novogradics, and, and they're just a married couple with young kids trying to do this. Not sure how they got involved in this project, but I think they realize they may have bitten off a little more than they can chew on this. So now what they want to do is, is get it finished, you know, we're telling them the time is right. We have been shepherding our plans through and trying to make sure that we get all the approvals at the same time. So when we get crews on the ground, we can move through this thing and get it all done quickly. Our biggest problem has been trying to get a, a faller up there to remove the bug trees, remove the hazard trees. They've already removed some. Ty, when was that, a couple of years ago? They went through and they dropped a bunch of hazard trees that were near neighboring houses. Apparently there's some more that have, have died in the last couple of years that need to come out. But the other aspect of this is that now we have a faller that can remove all the trees that are within the road right away. And that itself is an enormous cost. But we've got someone that's going to do that, like Ty mentioned, we've got a contract for that. The septic system designs have been improved. We have current approvals on those. We had to make some updates recently to regain those approvals. The grading plans have been through one iteration of revision, which was some years ago. We are now ready to resubmit those and get final approval so that this spring, we can send those out for bid, get a contractor lined up as soon as the snow's gone, we want to get to it. So that's where we are in the project. Yeah, it's been a long time getting here, but finally we're, I think we're ready to go. As you probably noticed, the name of the company has changed. And, and knowing Mike and Barbara, I think what they've done is they've reorganized themselves. And if I had to guess, I would say it's to bring in some sort of a partner that can share the cost and, and take care of the project management, get it off their, their busy shoulders. So I think we're seeing a big change now and, and, and everything I'm seeing is that they're, they're ready to move forward.
And, and will move forward.
You know, if I could predict the action of my clients, I'd make a lot more money. But every indication is that, yeah, they're, they're ready to go. They're, they're committing serious money now to, to infrastructure, not just plans, right? Putting, you know, hiring people to develop plans is one thing, right? Spending money on a forester to get in there and start actually getting trees out of the way, spending money on a contractor to put in those big community septic systems, that's a serious commitment in my mind and that's where we are.
I have one question. I understood from the previous speaker that the current contract that's been entered into with the logger was just as to the hazard trees. I, I understood you to be saying that it also includes the right of way?
I did not administer that contract, but my understanding is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ty, but trees within the right of way areas for the roadways are coming out. Is that a fair statement? Okay.
Okay. And, and that's part of this, a permit that you need to get approved by the state to, to do this?
It's a, and, and, and CalFire is a little funky on these things. You can do a timber harvest plan to remove the trees, but you can only do it once per property and it's for a limited timeframe. So we have a forester, I'm trying to remember the guy's name, what's his name? Yeah, I know, that's where I am too, sorry.
You have a forester?
We do, we do, he's out of Sonora, really good guy. He's done some work on the project. He's marked all the trees within the right of way area that has to come out. He's marked some of the bug trees that are coming down. Ty's done some of the other work. I can't remember the guy's name and I apologize.
That's okay.
But he has the paperwork ready to go to submit to the state to get that approved, that one-time approval so that we can get in there and, and clear those rights away.
And you will be ready to submit that to the state when, when you have?
I, as soon as we know that we can continue with the project. I mean, this, you guys are the holdup now.
We're the holdup.
No, as soon as we can get through this one hurdle and we know that we've got another, you know, extension of time, then, then from what I understand, it's, it's forward ho.
Okay, any questions?
Yes. I think you mentioned that you have recently done an update to the wastewater system plan.
Yes, that's correct. The plans were approved about a month ago and they're good, they're approved for a 12-month period.
Okay, so there's modifications to the design, been submitted to the county, have been approved?
Yeah, and just to step back for a minute and explain to you the project, because you had asked about, you know, what we've done since the project was approved. The, the septic system design is unique for this county. When did the board pass that resolution about no parcel splits with onsite systems? Is that '08?
The policy resolution?
Yeah, right, the non-
Is that '09?
Anyway, the board, the board passed a policy saying you can't subdivide with onsite septic systems anymore. And so this project was going through the motions and so we had to reconfigure the entire project. We had to design community septic systems, like little mini sewer treatment plants. And, and so in order to know whether or not we could go forward with that, we had to design these systems, get a preliminary approval from the county, had to take it before the board, get their approval as a, as a mitigation for their policy. And so that's why that was done upfront. But at the same time, we also did preliminary design work for the roadways, because that's the way you do subdivisions like this. You start early, you get, you figure out what all your problems are, you do all your preliminary engineering work, try and, try and wrap your arms around the cost and then you move forward, right?
Why did you have to do an update?
Because, one, the 12-month extension on the plans had expired and, two, the county had adopted new regulations. So we had to bring the plans up to, up to spec and then resubmit them for approval.
And that's been done in the past how many years, the update?
We did it this year, in January. We had appro, we got approvals in February.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to public comment. Please come up. You have five minutes and if you could sign in please and tell us who you are.
My name is Glenn Sewell. I live at 2692 Shoshone Drive. And you received a letter from me as well as our neighbors, Charles and Janelle Sloan. We're neighbors next door to each other and the property runs right behind our lots. I do have some pictures here that if you're interested in seeing of the property behind us. There are eight marked trees back there. Let me just give you a little timeline. Back in March, I met Tyrus for the first time, he did come out to the property, we talked. And I believe it was maybe around June, I happened to notice when I came home from one day that those trees had been marked. In October, Tyrus came out with a, with a logger. And they looked everything over and said they were going to be taken down. And we are into March and they're still there. Now, we know that there's a little snow back there right now. But in January and February, there was, it looked like August. So we had loggers up there, we had four trees in our backyard that died very near to where that property line is. I called A1 Land Management, they were out in two weeks, and cut those down. So there are guys out there that'll take those down and they're hauling logs out of there constantly, even now. So our concern is that those trees are marked, they are dead, they've been there now. Coming up on a year that they've been marked, they've been dead longer than that. But our concern is they, if they fall, they fart on, on our property, because we're right on the edge of the quarter. And there's a neighbor on our, on our east side as well as the Sloans on our west side. They're all back there, all those eight trees. So we just need to be sure that those are taken care of, because we, and it sounds like there is a logger, but I'm just saying, this has been going on for a while and Tyrus has been really good. He's been out there, we've met with him and the logger, that, I know that logger came in October and I know those guys are available for taking trees down. So I just need to be sure those are down first. Maybe the recommendation would be for a year, get things in line back there and show some accountability to that and then maybe move on from there. Just our thoughts. Questions?
I think, I would say that for you to keep the pressure on the developer is the, is the key thing. We're, as I understand it, we have the conditions of the subdivision map act that really, or for the subdivision map approval, that really don't include ongoing maintenance of the property. And that is their obligation as their neighbor to you to do that stuff irregardless of what's happening with the, with the subdivision map act. So I don't think that we're in a position of putting specific conditions on this approval, but I think you have put their feet to the fire by sparking this, this discussion.
Sure, and I get where you're coming from. We've, we've done that because there have been calls to them, that's just why Tyrus comes out. We do know that our, in our development, the HOA requires that we clean things up. And they go around and it's EBIT's past fire that tickets us if we don't clean our property up. We know that, that this is an undeveloped property in the back, which is a different status than those of us who own property and have them developed. But CalFire is the one responsible for doing that within our HOA development area. So we contacted our HOA to do that. Now, I don't know what has happened after that because we never heard anything back. But I guess my, our comment is, is that, is there something in regards to contacting CalFire? Or hold, somebody to hold feet to the fire here on this one, because we've tried this through phone calls. Tyrus comes out as soon as that, and, and then nothing happens after that. That's our only concern, so. Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So back to the department? Do you have anything to add? And any questions of the department at this point? So would either of you from the developer like to, like to speak to what has been raised in the public comment?
About all I would like to say is the hazard trees are the, are the priority one in terms of getting a logger out there. And we've been, I've been really trying to press him, even though there's snow on the ground, get out there and get those, he can drop them in the snow. So get out there and get them dropped. The original logger was, LTO was a gentleman by the name of Richards. He did the marking for the, for the timber harvest, for the roadway conversion.
Would that, would that have been the logger that was, that the neighbor saw last October?
No, that was, that was somebody else. That was somebody else that his sense sort of disappeared on me. I guess he's got other, other work to do. So that's why we had to switch and go with this logger out of Amador, Rich Stevens.
I think one thing that's important is that it be clear today that the hazard trees are the first priority and separate from anything else to be done with the property.
That's right.
And that's, that's clear to you and if you can make it clear to your neighbor, neighbors, I, I think we'll-
It's clear to us and it's a, it's a $45,000 contract that's been signed and that's number one. These two houses with the hazard trees that I've marked are job one. Before anything is done, get out there and get them down.
And you'd anticipate that being done within the next month?
Yes, I would think so, yes.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. So we'll close the public hearing on that and open the discussion by the commissioners.
I, I think there's been a sufficient showing of a good faith effort towards meeting the conditions of the map. I do think that the design of the community wastewater system that was done prior to 2012 doesn't count towards an extension from that time forward. But it's now clear on the record that he also did an update recently, so I think that does count. And we also have the, the grading system and the timber conversion permit papers prepared. So there's three things anyway that have been done.
And the other discussion?
I, I just wonder if there's a way we could add a sentence or two to the resolution. Item two, to mention the, this latest information about the logging contract, that it was signed, just more evidence of good faith. And it's not exactly a condition of our allowing this, but at least it mentions it. So if this comes up again, I would say no more extensions if I were around three years from now.
I also think that three years is too long. I think they put this off for a long time. I don't agree with three years. I think we should do a year.
I side with your, the notion that three years is a quite a long time, but I, I do understand there are roadblocks. There are things they have to do and it does take a while. So I, I would go with the three years a bit reluctantly, but I would go with-
What, Commissioner Bocelli, what, what would you suggest we do with the resolution as far as the?
Well, in, in the words, in the evidence section, I think is the only thing that needs to be added. The first sentence, applicant's made progress toward completing the public works condition by completing the grading plan. And I'm not sure it's that condition or the other condition where the, the wastewater system has been, or design has been updated, that can be inserted probably the second sentence. And then a new sentence, the third sentence would say the applicant has indicated he has recently signed a $45,000 contract with a logger to remove dead trees.
If I may add, sorry, can't see you. If we're talking about the possibility of reducing the numbers of years that you're graciously willing, it sounds like anyway, to grant them, keep in mind that the map expiration is actually in August. So that's August 23rd. If you only extend it for a year, we're already into, we're already into March. So that's gonna, you know, they've, they've got a significant amount of time since the map expired, you know,
Before now?
To now, so there's, that's going to significantly impact the likelihood of whether or not they're going to actually physically get the improvements done, so.
My, my understanding would be if the three-year extension would expire on October 23rd, 2020?
I think this was two and a half years.
It's just extend, it's extending beyond the, the expiration of the map.
Right.
And I believe-
Wasn't that October 23rd, 2017?
August 23rd.
August.
No, it was August 23rd. My records indicate that the map was originally approved on August 23rd, 2012. So the extension would go, so it, it, therefore it's going to expire in Au, it expired in August on the 23rd.
Yeah, so it-
So the extension would be granted from August.
Of last year.
Right.
So it's, it's August 23rd, 2020 would be what a three-year extension
Correct.
would give them, okay. I, I, seems to me that that's, that's a reasonable amount of time, both to keep them moving and-
Right, well, that's why I felt that needed to be added, because Commissioner Sisk is, is talking about only granting a year.
Right.
Instead of three.
And technically, a year would be...
Which I think pretty much is setting them up to fail if you only extended a year, because there's just not, there's insufficient time.
Right, okay. And...
And then they'll be back before you again.
Would the department...
Likely asking for another extension if you were only to grant a year.
Would the department have any problems with the amendments that Commissioner Bocelli was suggesting?
No, so, while he was, while he was talking about the addition, I was actually reading through the staff report. I did get the addition where he wants to include in the evidence the signed contract with the registered professional forester for the removal of the dead trees and the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. Was there something else? Did I miss?
I was mentioning the updating of the...
Oh, of the modification to the...
The community wastewater.
The community wastewater, okay.
Right, it's approved and I guess subsequently updated, or maybe it was updated in time two.
Well, on that sentence, you could say the environmental management agency condition fee dash one was satisfied, and then go on the way you have it, and then add at the end, prior to 2012, and the design plans were updated and approved in 2018.
Okay.
Let's give her a chance to write that down.
And?
I'm having trouble seeing how the addition suggested by Commissioner Bocelli regarding the tree removal contract ties to any of the conditions for approval that they have to have been making a good faith effort to meet. And so I think it's clear on the record where that is in terms of their intentions. But I'm not convinced it belongs in this resolution.
When it's, when it's in the evidence, well, you assume the evidence is relevant, and that particular, the contract for the dead trees is not really a part of the conditions here. I think, my feeling is that the discussion has been quite clear, and that the intentions are, and it's a matter of public record, the intentions are to get to the dead tree logging right away. It's, I don't see where we really can make that a part of our evidence, but as between neighbors, I think the situation is quite clear and the obligations are quite clear.
Perhaps we need clarification. I was, I was under the impression that the dead trees were gonna be the priority, but in fact, the contract may include the removal of the other trees for the installation of the infrastructure? Correct.
Okay, so that maybe we would not specifically mention the dead, dead trees, but that there is a logging contract?
I think if we leave out the word dead trees, then that would imply...
Yeah.
That it's much bigger. It's a broader scope.
Okay.
But which condition would that tie to?
There are public works conditions that require the removal, necessary state and federal permits prior to grading. condition for the fact that before they can actually improve the property, they have to get the trees removed.
Could it be part of item five on the 2012 resolution? Requirements necessary to protect public health, safety, and general welfare?
In the, in the resolution approving the subdivision? Oh.
Yeah, the 2012 one, that's what we're looking for.
Oh, under, yeah, those are findings.
Those are conditions.
I think, I think Commissioner Rooster wanted to tie that directly to a condition, not specifically a finding, but a condition of approval.
I think as long as it's covered by a condition for approval, well, we don't need to specifically cite it.
Well, the statute's talking about a good faith effort has been made in pursuit of meeting conditions of the map. That's why I'm looking at the conditions of the map.
Right, but I, I think, I think what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that although there may not be a specific condition that says thou shall remove trees on the property prior to doing X, Y, Z, you have to. I mean, the tree removal is necessary. You can't install infrastructure, you can't grade without removing the trees, so that's kind of something that just is automatically done. They can't remove the trees without getting a permit. So the tree removal really has to be one of the first things that they, that they do.
I would apply it to condition three dash one, public works condition. So the general condition that talks about all of the public works requirements, including road improvements. And I agree with Gina that there isn't a specific condition that says get a, you know, a timber conversion plan, but that is a necessity prior to tree removal for grading and road construction and waterline insulation. So the general condition of three dash one covers all of public works requirements, and I think that's a prerequisite to making those improvements.
Well, the timber conversion permit preparation is already included in the resolution, so far as the permit's concerned. I think what I'm hearing is the common sense notion, which is true, that yes, you gotta pull the trees out before you can grade, but that's, that's not a condition of the map. That is a, a physical necessity to do the improvement. It's not a map condition. And I'm, I'm not comfortable with including something here as, as part of a good faith condition of meeting a condition of the map in this case. When the next case comes along, when all that somebody's done is hire a logger to cut down some trees, which they have to do quite independently of conditions of the map, that's not a good precedent.
So you're suggesting that we just leave the, the resolution the way it is, except for the noting of the updating of the wastewater?
Correct.
I disagree with your analysis, saying that this is the setting a precedent, since we're only talking about one of several comments. We're talking about the good faith efforts, we're not talking about the details of the commissions. I disagree with...
Well, I think, I share, I share Commissioner Rooster's concern that if we, if we have, if we're confronted with a situation where the key thing seems to be, I mean, in another case, key indication of good faith is entering into a logging contract, and that is not specifically covered by the conditions, then maybe we are setting a precedent that, that we shouldn't set. Here, it's one factor among many of stu... It's a fact of what's going on. But Commissioner Rooster, I mean, we, they have to get this permit in order to proceed with the, with the project. You're just saying that the, that it isn't a specific condition that they get this permit, and so therefore it isn't a proof of a good faith effort to continue, is that...
Well, I don't have a problem with including the preparation of the timber conversion permit. That's already in there. What I'm saying is that getting a logging contract with a private contractor to remove dead trees is not a condition of the map. And therefore, signing that contract, obtaining that contract doesn't tie to meeting conditions of the map. That's all I'm saying.
And my...
And we don't need it.
My feeling is, since we don't need it in this case, and it might come back to bite us in another case, and the record is clear, public record is clear, as to the interneighborly obligations regarding the dead trees, I would tend to leave it out.
So are we saying that the evidence is sufficient the way it's written?
With the addition of the...
Right.
Updating of the...
Right.
Of the water.
So all the tree stuff, we just leave it out?
Well, let's, let's do a poll here. Leave it out? Okay.
Put it in.
Three to one, okay.
And it's a good faith effort. We're not talking about the conditions precisely. We're seeing the good faith effort towards meeting the conditions, and that's the distinction I don't seem to hear anyone recognizing.
Well, I, I think you're making a pretty good point, but we end up two to two. I'm not getting anywhere, so, all right. So I will, for today, I'm gonna stick with, siding with Commissioner Rooster. And so I guess we're to the staff's recommendation and resolution?
We got a couple of typos.
Yes.
In the heading, it says, "A resolution approving a three-year extension for time to tentative subdivision track map should be a resolution approving a three-year extension of time for tentative subdivision track map," et cetera. And down in the last where it has clause, we need to change the date from January eleventh, 2018 to March twenty-second, 2018. Other than that, and the addition of the update to the design plans for the wastewater system, I'm fine with the resolution.
And the department's fine with that?
Absolutely.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution as amended.
Seconded.
Hall of favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Right.
So it's three to one, with Commissioner Sisk voting no. The resolution has passed, and that item is over.
This action is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors within fifteen calendar days.
Just so there is no mistaken, it's for three years?
For three.
Thank you for coming. So, since we, we don't have a number, item number three on this agenda, right? So items two and four have been withdrawn? So, do, shall we continue, or do you need a recess? Okay, let's continue. So the item before us now is 2010-554, the appeal by John Lowery of the planning commissioner's denial of commercial cannabis cultivation, registration application on APN 014-023-002. Let me get my papers in order. Okay, and so we'll hear from the department, Miguel?
Good morning. This is Miguel with the planning department. I'm here to present an appeal, 2016-554. This appeal is for John Lowery, which, who was denied for, or pursuant to seventeen point nine five point one six five point N point fifteen point A point one of the urgency ordinance, which states that a applicant can be denied if the sheriff's department finds any conviction of a felony or misdemeanor that is reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties of a applicant and the type of registration that they're applying for.
And before you go any further, Miguel, but is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Could you come forward, Mr. Lowery? Good morning. The usual thing is the department has fifteen minutes, then you'll have fifteen minutes, and they have a rebuttal, and you have a rebuttal, and in the middle, middle of that, we have public comment. But since this involves a question of a criminal record, I wanted to make it clear to you, I know you have submitted as part of your papers, a criminal record sheet, whatever you wanna call it. But I want to make, make it clear to you that we have a situation where, in order for the sheriff to present his evidence as to what he has found in the criminal record to the commission, and his reasoning, et cetera, we need to get a waiver of you, from you, that it's, you permit us to, to consider that evidence. The, the flip side of that question is, you have the burden of proof, of proving that this denial of the, of the application is, is wrong, and your appeal should be granted. So you have the burden of proof. You need to weigh whether you want to waive all the privacy rights you might have as far as the sheriff talking about your, your convictions, if any. Have to weigh that against the fact that we really need to consider that sort of stuff in order for you to, to succeed in your burden of proof.
Okay.
Is that clear?
So basically, just open discussion of my past records?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, I just wanted to make...
Yeah, no.
Good, I'm glad that's clear. Now, now we'll let, you don't, you can stand there, or you can wait until it's your turn while they do that.
Oh, yeah, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so continuing. The sheriff found that the registrant had been convicted of a felony in 2011. This felony was reduced to a misdemeanor, misdemeanor in 2015. However, that conviction was of a disqualifying nature, and the urgency ordinance does allow for disqualification, whether it's a felony or a misdemeanor. It's the sheriff's discretion, and the planning director's discretion as well. In his appeal letter, the appellant explains that he spoke to someone from the SO office who was in charge of answering cannabis questions, and they stated that his previous convictions wouldn't be an issue if he did not have a lengthy criminal history. However, the urgency ordinance does not say multiple convictions are necessary for denial. And the urgency ordinance does state that any felony or misdemeanor in the singular that the sheriff finds reasonably related can be grounds for denial. And that's it for my presentation.
And I'll just further point out that Captain Macedo is present here to discuss why he believes the misdemeanor conviction is related to the duties responsibilities of a cannabis cultivator in the county.
Great, and we, is there questions of the department itself?
Not from me.
Captain Macedo, welcome again. Glad you didn't have to sit around all morning this morning. Start with...
Good morning. Jim Macedo from the sheriff's office. I'm here today to answer any, answer any questions or shed some light on, on this matter. As mentioned by Mr. Turner, the sheriff's office disqualified this applicant for, for a conviction that was reasonably related. Also, in my review of the packet, there were some traffic infractions and some warrants for the appellant's arrest that were not disclosed during the application process. I was also fortunate enough to be able to read the Stockton Police Report surrounding the arrest of the appellant. And I think it's important to note that the Stockton Police Department arrested the appellant for not only possession, but possession for sale. And I took note of the amount of heroin that was obtained from the appellant. It was well over six grams, which while six grams of marijuana does not seem like a lot of marijuana, six grams of heroin is a substantial amount, especially when you're considering heroin dosages being in the amount... It was well over six grams, which while six grams of marijuana does not seem like a lot of marijuana, six grams of heroin is a substantial amount, especially when you're considering heroin dosages being in the amount of milligrams as opposed to grams. The appellant also was arrested with a large amount of cash on him along with the heroin.
Couple of things. One, infractions aren't mentioned in the urgency ordinance, so I assume that without the infractions you've mentioned, your conclusion would have been the same on this one.
Correct, but what I was referencing was our application asks for any and all arrest charges of any sort. And I noticed there was some driving on suspended license, traffic-related information that was not included, and there was a warrant, a couple, a warrant, either a single warrant with two charges or two separate warrants that weren't disclosed relating to either failure to appear or failure to pay. And those are also remarkable to the sheriff's office because it shows a willingness to comply with the registration process and regulation. If someone were to not be willing to comply with the local courts, why would they comply with the Caleres County Marijuana Cultivation Registration Process? So we are looking for somebody who's compliant with the courts and the systems and filling out paperwork appropriately and being honest and forthright in the paperwork.
And I understand from your presentation that it wasn't just a matter of looking at what the conviction was for, but you looked at the individual facts of the case as a further basis for your decision, is that correct?
Well, the conviction alone would be disqualifying. I just, in this particular case, I was fortunate enough to be able to delve into that a little further and look at circumstances that would be beyond what is just shown on a regular criminal history sheet.
Was he convicted of possession of heroin?
Yes.
What I'm looking at is, there was a count for possession of marijuana.
Possession of marijuana is 11357 of the Health and Safety Code. Not to be confused with 11351.
Okay.
11351 is possession of an opioid.
So linking at the record, there's a, it looks like 11350, Health and Safety, possessed narcotic controlled substance disposition, convicted, that's a heroin?
Yes, that's an opioid. 11350 and 11351 are related to opioids. 11357 of the Health and Safety Code, 11358, 11359 are related to marijuana.
And then the felony conviction was reduced to a misdemeanor?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? And do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Lowry, it's your turn. You have 15 minutes.
Sign in first?
Excuse me? Yes, please. Thank you, you're doing my job for me.
Okay. I purchased this property in 2016. As I was in escrow, we received a packet from the sheriff's department pertaining to the grow and information that they needed to sufficiently look at and see if I was able to be a part of a grow in this county. When I looked at it, I had read, and I also found out from other growers, that felony was probably going to be a reason to turn you away. Well, I had my property in escrow, and I called the sheriff's department. Nobody really knew what to say except for that they had one person that was answering all cannabis questions. They forwarded me to a recording. I left a message. I got a call back a couple of days later. When I spoke to them, actually, when I very first turned in my very first application, was the first year application, I brought my own DOJ background check that had everything listed on it. So I never withheld anything. I turned that on to my own, they never asked for it. Then I went to this.
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
I turned that in, and they never asked for it. I just made sure I wanted to be open in front about everything.
That was when you applied in 2016?
Yes, yeah. And then, so when I spoke to them on the phone, I was straight up about it. I told them exactly what my charges were and would this be a reason that I would be denied or not? Because I had a huge decision weighing on my shoulders. If they told me this was, yeah, you're probably not going to get in, then I wouldn't have purchased the property. Well, they told me I'd be okay, so I went along with my plans. Now we're almost two years later, and it's saying that it's a problem. I turned in paperwork. I was upfront about everything. Yeah, I had a past. I did a couple of things. I was never charged with sales. When I was initially arrested, the officer just assumed that. But when we went to court, I was actually only charged with possession, not with sales. I've done everything I can to make the grow and make my area clean as possible, up to date on everything. I don't spray any harmful chemicals. I don't leave trash around. I've done everything the way it should be done. My issue is, is that I've now spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. I actually, in 2015, had to do a year of drug court to make sure, to try to clean up my past. You know, I was young, I made a bad decision. But I don't think that should hinge my whole life and everything I'm trying to do now to get myself together and trying to be a productive member of society. I love this community, I want to stay here. I just think that, I just don't know how they can go back on a decision when they told me that. Like, they've very much told me that I wouldn't be denied for that. And I mean, other than an infraction for driving under suspended license, which I don't think they would be bringing up as a reason for denial, I don't see how making a mistake and then writing that mistake is cause for me not to be able to continue doing what I'm doing. I haven't been in trouble since. It's been almost eight years. I'd like to keep, continue doing what I'm doing. And I just, I want to reiterate, I never tried to hide anything from anybody. I put out way too much money to do that. So I wanted to be upfront and honest as soon as I was doing this to make sure. Also, I don't know if you guys would like to read this. I brought a letter from my, the treasurer, secretary and treasurer of the Homeowners Association stating, if you'd like to read it, it's about what kind of a person I am, how I've been since I've been there in the two years. So it kind of shows you what I've been doing and how I've been operating.
If you'd like to submit that, why we could, we could look at it.
Yeah, I'd love to submit it. I'd love you to submit it. I brought two copies. The last things I'd like to add is just that it's, I know it's up in the air here about growing in this county. But if I were to be denied, I would like to be denied of something in my own doing, like I didn't, I didn't meet the setbacks, or I illegally did this, or something like that. Something like this that I've already paid for. I took the time to have it reduced. It doesn't just happen. You know, I had to go through a lengthy process to try to clean up my past and make it to where I can have the same rights as everybody else. And, you know, despite what people think about marijuana growers, they're not all rich. I'm just trying to make it. I took out personal loans. In debt as we speak, and I really need to continue doing what I'm doing so I can support my family. Right now, it's my wife, myself, and four kids, and she has an inoperable brain tumor that has allowed her not to be able to work full-time. So we're struggling as it is. If I can't keep growing, if I can't produce for my family, I don't know where I'm going to be. So I really like you to consider that in making your decision and understand that when you're a young kid, as opposed to an adult now and making decisions, you tend to not think about things and reflect on them until you're older and you understand. So I just really appreciate it, take that into consideration, that I've done everything I can to try to right my ways.
Other questions from Mr. Lowry?
Yes. The appeal letter says that you called the sheriff's department. At the time, you were told to leave a message for someone who oversaw answering all marijuana questions. The period was between end of May to beginning of June of 2016. Is that correct?
No, I believe it was April and May, because May 10th, there was no, if you hadn't done anything after May 10th, then like you couldn't do it. You had to show proof that you had already been doing stuff before then. My property had not closed until April. So during April is when I made the call to find out if the felony that was expunged would be a problem. The sheriff or the person in answering questions at the time told me, look, if this is your, if this is your charge, and you've done what you can to reduce it like a misdemeanor like I did, as long as you don't have a lengthy background and you're not, you know, a huge criminal, that you should be fine. So taking that into consideration, and my willingness to jump into the market, I purchased the property. I spent $90,000, actually, I got a loan to spend $90,000 on the property. And we're two years later now, instead of in the first year when they had access to this information. Even the planning department had access to this information. And I've dumped probably another $150,000 in infrastructure onto this property that's not going to be worth what I need to sell it for to recruit losses because of the up in the airness about growing in this county. So my whole life hinges on this.
So when did escrow close on the purchase?
The very end of April. I don't have the paperwork on me for that. But it was the end of April in 2016, because I was waiting, I had already started doing work on the property. The person I brought it from, I told him I was going to move forward with it. I had no indication of being denied for a felony. I had already prior started doing work on the property. I got permission from the landowner at the time, because I wanted to prepare before then. So I actually did work before I even owned the property.
Okay, thanks for clearing it up.
Now, the ordinance itself does say felony or misdemeanor, and as I understand, the sheriff's decision is based on the misdemeanor, but the type of misdemeanor that was involved. I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, no, I understand that now, but I wish that would have been explained to me back then, because I got reassurance from the sheriff's department that regardless, this was not going to be an issue for me. I had went through drug court, and I took the time to have it reduced to a misdemeanor, and I haven't had any problems since. I mean, I don't know if you've read that letter, but you can see, I mean, that's the secretary and treasurer of the Homeowners Association.
Yeah.
There was another person growing across from them that they couldn't stand and got them out of there. So I would think if I was a nuisance or a big problem, they wouldn't be writing a letter for me.
That's pretty clear.
You realize that it's not only the sheriff's decision, correct? In the ordinance, it says the sheriff or the planning director?
Yes. Well, I spoke to the sheriff at the time. I talked to the planning department, and they referred me to the sheriff on that question. So that's why I went with the sheriff. At the time, I think there was a lot of up in the air, a lot of everybody didn't know anything. So, you know, I tried to cover my bases as best as I could.
When you spoke to the man in the sheriff's department, did you tell him the previous conviction was for possession of heroin?
Yes, I did, absolutely. I wanted to be straight up with everybody. I didn't want to hide anything. I was making too big of an investment and commitment. I couldn't not say that.
Do you know who you talked to, the sheriff's department?
No, because at the time, they didn't even give me a name. They referred me to a recording to leave a message. So when I got a call back, it was somebody that was in charge at the time of asking marijuana-related questions. I didn't get the name of them because I had so much going on at the time, and I was elated to hear that my criminal past, although had been amended, would not be, and I had to close property. I had to start bringing stuff out. I had a bunch of stuff to do, and I thought that I was assured that I would be okay.
And as I understand it, why the, your understanding of the message from that person that returned your call, answered your request, was that it should not be a problem?
Yeah, it would not be a problem. And the exact wording was, as long as it's been taken care of, you don't have a lengthy criminal past, it will not be a problem. You will not be denied for that reason alone.
Well, that's, it's a different, if they say will not, or it should not be a problem. You think it was adamant that it was?
Well, it's been two years since the exact wording, but what I got from it is it's not going to be a problem.
You got that part, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, why, why would you not just?
That's fine, I won't ask you to put specific words to it, then. Okay, any other questions?
Just one, did you get a harvest in 16?
Yeah, I got a harvest in 16, but this area is completely new to me. There was a lot of bugs and issues out there that I wasn't aware of that's different from down in the valley. And it took a very big toll.
What about 17? Did you have a harvest in 17?
17, we had a harvest. It was better because we were ready for the conditions of what we knew, but yes, we did get a harvest.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to go back to the department for rebuttal with the sheriff, and then you'll have a chance to answer anything that they bring up.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add maybe some clarification. In April of 2015, there was no regulation in place. We were working on a draft ordinance. The board, sometime in mid-April, considered adopting an urgency ordinance, did not do so. We came back on May 10th, and at that hearing, there was discussion with the sheriff about expanding the draft language regarding disqualification, disqualifying convictions. At that time, the board added, expanded the language to include both felony and misdemeanor convictions. And so there was no, there were no standards, and I think that's probably why the sheriff's office staff said, well, you need to wait, because we don't know what the rules and regulations are going to be. I think at that time, there might have been an understanding that a felony conviction would be a disqualifying factor, and I believe that is also was in state law at the time. But, you know, until the ordinance was actually adopted on May 10th, that expanded the provisions of what was a disqualifying conviction. We did not have any rules or regulations in place, and so there couldn't have been a determination made by the sheriffs that, you know, disqualify this, wouldn't, because at that time, there wasn't any, you know, again, we were working on things. I think everyone was sort of trying to figure out what direction we were going, but there probably was some uncertainty on the part of the sheriff, because, or sheriff's office, because, again, we had no standards in place.
The appeal letter says that the period apparently of this message was between the end of May and the beginning of June of 2016. You know, no specific date.
What I heard the appellant just say was that that was back in April, because the property was, that was, that took place while he was in escrow, and the property closed in the end of April, I believe he said. So I think that was probably a mistake in his letter.
And just to clarify, the deed is recorded for 18, 2016, so April 18th of 16.
Okay. And do you have anything further for the department?
I do, just one quick comment. There seemed to be a little bit of a question during Captain Macedo's presentation about what the. what the breadth of the basis of his determination was, and, and I just wanted to point out that I think that Captain Macedo can look at surrounding circumstances, other convictions and other activities, just as, uh, the appellant can point out, exculpatory behavior and activity and other conditions surrounding his conviction that would be, um, that would militate towards granting the appeal. Captain Macedo can buttress his reasoning and the basis for his decision with any other information that may be available to him about the applicant.
That, including infractions?
I, I, I think including any information that might be available to him to...
Well, if we're, if we're dealing with felonies or misdemeanors in the, in the ordinance, um, and then infractions are brought in, I mean, I, I understand looking at the facts of the particular conviction and what, what was involved there, and whether there was violence, or whether there was lots of money, or that sort of thing. But, how can we be, can, how can the sheriff base his decision based on infractions in, in any way if the ordinance is talking about misdemeanors and felony?
Well, I, when, in making the determination that a, that a misdemeanor or a felony is reasonably related to the duties and responsibilities, um, one can't do that by simply looking at, at the felony itself unless that felony is so conclusively related to it. So, yeah, I mean, I think that there, I don't think he would say that infraction is the basis for the denial, but I think he can look at surrounding circumstances that reveal patterns of conduct.
Okay. Captain Macedo, uh, you come back up? First, do you have anything yourself that you'd like to add or...
No, I have nothing further.
Um, so, focusing on, on what the applicant has said as far as the phone discussions with the Sheriff's Office, um, if that conversation took place, um, before the enactment of the, of the, uh, urgency ordinance, and whether it took place after the enactment, I, I just like your comments on, on that part of this.
Yeah, I, I really don't have any comments on hearsay, uh, and it's difficult for me to, to address what somebody, you know, may or may not have been told over two years ago when calling into the office. The denial of this particular case was handled by the sheriff, um, and I'm here to testify towards that, and I've done the research in support of that, and then I was obviously involved in the drafting of the policy. So, I really have no comments as related to, to hearsay.
Okay.
Uh, I, I will just briefly address, though, the reason why I brought up the infractions is because the application, again, requires list any and all arrests or formal charges with or without a disposition for any criminal offenses within the United States. And those infractions qualify under that, and those were not disclosed during the application period. I realize that was not the basis for the denial, but that is a supporting factor, uh, which I think is, I'm in agreement with Mr. Turner, is completely appropriate when you're looking at the totality of the circumstances based upon the approval or, or denial.
Okay. Any other questions for Captain Macedo?
Briefly, uh, looking at the arrest record, it looks like there were three different dates of, of the offense, I think.
Now, what we have is what has been submitted by the applicant.
Okay.
And it looks like it's twenty eleven, here, twenty eleven is the first one noted, and it's of January eighteenth. The second one I see is two thousand and ten, actually earlier, out of Lodi, January, can't quite read it. And then there's a third date of an incident or an arrest, twenty eleven, May twenty-fifth. Are those the three dates that you have in your records, or are there others?
Um, I can, I can read the dates that I have, uh, however, when reviewing criminal histories, I think it's important to note that the arrest and booking date will show up on a criminal history as one date, and the actual conviction date will also reappear later on.
Yeah, no, I see the conviction dates later.
However, the driving on a suspended license and their infractions I referenced, those are separate, those appear to be separate from the original case where he was arrested from for possession of heroin. So, those traffic cases, I have, I have three or four dates total in the, in the criminal history.
And...
Oh, we have three, although there's a fourth item, applicant for elder care or something, but that's...
Yeah, I'm not referencing that.
Okay. Um, and you're not, you're not, as I understand it, you're not claiming that Mr. Lowry was not forthcoming about his criminal record, you're just referring to your, your forms as, as...
I think Mr. Lowry disclosed, uh, some of his criminal history, not his entire criminal history, and I think it would probably be fair to say he disclosed most of the more harmful stuff, but I think he failed to disclose some of the smaller items.
Did the Sheriff's Office get the copy of his criminal record that, I understand, he said he submitted to the planning department?
I don't know. We run separate, we run that separately.
Okay.
To avoid any confusion, or any redaction, or any game playing, you know, we, we want to use an independent verified criminal history as opposed to something that was delivered by the appellant.
Okay. Great. Any further questions? Thank you very much. Let's see, I have, uh, I neglected to ask for a public comment. If there's, is there a public comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Now is your turn.
How you doing? My name's Rick Baldwin, and I am the current Lakewood Pines Homeowners Association Manager, and I would love to see Karen or whoever's letter that is, because I don't know anything about it. And I did have a conversation with them about Mr. Lowry's disposition in, in the Homeowners Association. Um, I know you guys have a lot to consider, um, because there's community, there's California planning, there's county planning, there's municipalities planning and stuff like that, but what I think, and the reason why I'm here, is that you guys forget about the HOAs and why people live in an HOA, because we don't want certain things happening or being done. And I'm going to be specific, even though marijuana probably wasn't so much grown back in the mining days around here, but this association made a direct rule in their rules about mining, no commercial mining on the property. So, when you consider that and the things that are going on today, then you, you got to realize that people don't want certain things in an HOA. We want to live good, clean little lives, you know, in, in our little places, and have nice little projects. I'm not supportive of marijuana grows in a commercial basis, and I don't, and I refer to the gold mining aspect, because I, if that was going on then, I think that they would have included that. That's my opinion, I get that, but you need to really hear what people are saying when they file HOAs, and that this is filed, we have an amendment filed in seventy-five here in Calaveras. We have, the whole plan was filed in seventy-three in the state of California. So, I, I have a real hard time trying to understand why we have the, some of the things going on that we have going on. Um, I have a little bit of a question for you regarding permitting. It's, why grows move forward without approval? It doesn't make any sense to me. You're, you're in here talking about a, a real estate project that can't move forward unless you guys approve of it, and it makes no sense to me that all these grows have been allowed to move forward for years now, and most of them weren't approved until just recently, because I've been watching the approval list, and most of them were not approved, and yet everybody's been growing. And our HOA rules, they're, they're applied to things like that, and I, I covered the gold mining. I have my HOA rules here. Um, you guys want a copy of them? I have copies of them here for you.
I think if you, uh, from what you've said, it sounds as if there isn't a specific HOA provision that bans the commercial growth of medical marijuana, because this predates...
Yes, it does, but...
That question.
Use of lots and common area. This is on page nine, article thirteen. The lots and common areas shall be occupied and used as follows. Each lot shall be used for residential purposes by the owner, guests, and no other purposes. They even put gold mining, no, no commercial gold mining, no running of types of businesses and things like that. You guys need to consider that. Those are our rules that we are required to live by. These were set forth down here in nineteen, in nineteen seventy-three.
Mr. Chair, if, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, but, you know, the county does not enforce homeowner association CCNRs.
Right.
Uh, those are private deed restrictions between property owners that purchase property and homeowners association.
That's true.
There is nothing in the ordinance that requires conformance with CCNRs. The county does not enforce CCNRs on any other types of permits, um, and I think that to go down this path would be just not appropriate.
Well, it is appropriate if, if, if people that are living within there, they're coming in here, a guy, a gentleman was in here from an HOA talking about the trees that could probably fall on his property. It, it is pertinent, you guys have responsibilities to, to...
But it is, it is not the county's responsibility to enforce homeowner association CCNRs.
I didn't say that, I didn't say that.
You just said that, we have a responsibility.
I said, I said, I said that you, well, you do, you, we are also taxpayers of this county, sir.
I, we are, we are all our taxpayers, yes, but the county does not enforce CCNRs. Those are not county rules, those are private deed restrictions.
Right.
That you, your association would need to enforce. If you felt there was a violation of those terms of CCNRs, then you would need to bring an action against the property owner who was violating those terms.
But, I think just to be a little bit more granular, I think we, we should, we, I think, I would just caution the commission that with respect to whether the conviction is reasonably related, the homeowners association rules would not be something you could use for that determination.
Yes, I understand that, too. Thank you for your time.
Turn.
I'm, I'm also from the homeowners association.
Could you sign, sign in, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm also from the homeowners association, and I live kitty corner from the property, and it's not just about, okay, you say you're not going to follow our CCNRs, but when we purchased our property, we were given a copy of our CCRs, and it stated in there, like one thing, you can't have, uh, you can't have a turkey farm there, you can't have a cow, you can have a horse and a pig and goats, but when we purchased the property, we had to look at those things to decide if we wanted to be in this homeowners association or not, and it stipulates in there, no commercial businesses. I run an accounting business. I do not run it out of my home. I go to my client's location. The big problem with having the grows in the neighborhood is not just the over-rap smell. We have an elder living in our house that COPD and asthma, and when the grow's going on, she can't go outside. We can't use the regular air conditioner for her. There's a lot of health issues involved in this, but when we purchased our properties, we were given the CCNRs, I was told not to run my business out of it, I couldn't have a cow, I had to check, I have two horses, and I have three, four goats at that time. I had to check and follow those before I went through the decision of purchasing the property. And I think everybody does that before they purchase. And, you know, you're saying not following the CCNRs, but if you're in purchasing something of that value, you're going to look at everything, not just what the county says, the state says, but also what your homeowners association states. So, that's just us stating that we don't want the grows in our neighborhood, and that's why we bought into that neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other public, uh, comment?
Um, on the subject of public comment, I just wanted to ask if the commission received the email that I sent out on the fifteenth. It's a public comment from Renee Dieter and Treasurer Dieter.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Please go back.
When I moved into the homeowners association...
And, and it really, as, as was made clear, uh, by the planning director, any differences between you and the homeowners association are not something that we're going to be directly considering in determining this.
Okay. I just want to make a quick statement.
Sure, sure.
It's been almost two years, and I've never met either one of these people, and they've never had a complaint, so I'm kind of boggled by that whole situation, to be honest with you. Um, the meetings have been sporadic, I've only gotten letters from Paul and Karen, but I do deliver directly across from them, and, uh, I took into consideration that there is Secretary and Treasurer, and any information, um, regarding my grow not being wanted there would been told to me by them, as I speak to them on a regular basis. They're my direct right across neighbors.
But let's, let's get back to the issue between you and the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
You've, you've heard what the sheriff has said and the department has said, um, and I think we're getting into the timing of your conversations with the Sheriff's Department is rather key, and if it was during the escrow proceedings of your property?
Yeah, yeah. Um, it was during the escrow. The reason that the packet didn't get turned in till June thirtieth is when they asked the deadline for you to pay your five thousand dollars and have the packet turned in by a certain period of time. Also, I'd like to see if there's any way the planning commission has the paperwork for my first submittal. It will show that I turned in my own copy of DOJ without being asked, and it should be dated, so you can see that I wasn't hiding anything from anybody.
Do you have that with you?
I'd have to look through it.
If you could check that out.
That's all.
Um, any, any questions from the commission? My, my understanding then is that the discussion with the Sheriff's Department was while escrow was still open on your property?
Yes, yeah. I didn't make the final decision on the property until I found out.
And the escrow closed in late April, was it?
I believe he has the copy of the date, the exact date. I don't have the paperwork.
Uh-huh. Yeah, anyhow, it was, it was before May tenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yes, there is a DOJ, uh, copy of his record.
Okay. With his application, it was submitted June thirtieth.
And might I add, at the time, there was, uh, it was kind of a gray area, there was a bunch of up in the air, nobody knew what to do. That's why I turned it in with my application. Uh, the application was to be reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, in which they would have saw that at the time. So, that was my thought, was thinking, they'll see this, too, and it shows I'm not hiding anything.
Yeah. I have a question, and I do understand that the county and this commission don't enforce homeowner association rules, but did you get a copy of the HOA rules before you closed escrow?
No, because I wasn't a homeowner.
Did you ask anybody for them?
No, because at the time, uh, I had not spoken to anybody except for the person that I was buying the property from. When I ran into Paul and Karen and received, uh, the COAs shortly after I had completed, finished, finishing purchasing the property, um, at the time, that I was informed that there were other growers in the association as well, and that they did not want me to have a bunch of in-and-out traffic, and then if I was going to grow, just to keep it, um, quiet as possible. And, uh, I took every step necessary to try to keep my surrounding neighbors in that area front, back, and side to side, um, to keep them from having any, um, how do I explain it, or the word, um, having any problems... Having any problems with what I was doing pertaining to being in-and-out traffic, being loud, anything like that.
Thank you.
Is that all?
No, I think the public comment's done. If, if nobody has an objection, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
I just want to make a comment.
No, just step up to the, I go on.
I just want to make a comment that Mr. Lowery actually bought the property from his parent, okay, his father or somebody like that. And they had copies of the HOAs. And Mr. Lowery and me, we have had face-to-face, because I walked through his property and shook his hand with him when he first came out there. And when he first came out there, his ideas of growing were said to be of personal nature, not of a commercial nature.
So if there's no other input, we'll close the public hearing and open discussion and deliberations.
Can I say one more thing, sorry?
I, go right ahead. That's, that's fine.
I just wanted to show that I did not purchase the property from my stepdad. He was the one that gave me a loan that allowed me to purchase the property. So if he had the CCNRs before me, I wasn't aware of it.
Thank you. All right. We'll close public hearing, open for discussion and deliberation by the commissioners. Any discussion?
I don't think the statements by the sheriff's department that the applicant is claiming to have been made have anything to do with this. Urgency ordinance is pretty clear. The sheriff's department did its investigation, came back with its determination. And I don't see any reason to uphold his appeal.
I agree. I commend him for turning in his paperwork because it wasn't asked for. But it's the sheriff's office decision, and we've upheld this decision on many other cases. So I don't see how we can even waver from that.
I think it's a. It's an unfortunate circumstance where Mr. Lowery did everything possible to try and figure out if there was going to be a problem with his criminal record before he fully committed to this. And the problem is, is that at the time of the discussion with the sheriff's department, there wasn't the ordinance. The ordinance itself then was enacted that said, gave the responsibilities to the sheriff's department and, and made it a question of whether there were misdemeanors or felonies that the sheriff's department found reasonably related to the responsibilities of the grower. I, I don't see how we can find that the sheriff's office abused its discretion in, in determining that the misdemeanor conviction for possession of heroin was not a pertinent violation under the ordinance as enacted. Mr. Lowery, you, you did what you could before the ordinance was enacted to see where things were going. And whatever the sheriff's office told you at that point, they couldn't say for sure because the ordinance had not been enacted. So I, I feel we're obligated by the ordinance to, to deny this appeal. But it is absolutely no reflection upon what you have been doing as, as a permit holder in the actual growing of your, of your crops, et cetera. That there's no basis for any decision today to say that you weren't anything but a model grower. But the sole basis for a decision denying your appeal would be on, on the determination of the sheriff's department that was made after the, under the terms of the ordinance as actually enacted. Any other discussion? So we have a recommendation from the staff?
The recommendation is for the planning commission to adopt the resolution denying the appeal of John Lowery for application for commercial medical cannabis registration two thousand sixteen dash five five four.
Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
This denial of the appeal is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors within fifteen calendar days.
And I want to thank Mr. Lowery for his forthcoming and that you have been opened through this process. And we're just bound by the stat, by the ordinance.
Let me ask you, if I can appeal, is it just going to go back to?
Well, that's, that's what he was just referring to. You can appeal it to the board of supervisors.
Okay. And that would be my end for?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. We'll take a, well, a fifteen-minute break. Basically, it's, we'll regroup at eleven fifteen. So we call the meeting back to order. We have item number six on the agenda. It was twenty sixteen dash six sixty. The appeal by Michael Blackman on behalf of Cali Delta Patients Alliance of the planning director's denial of commercial cannabis cultivation registration application. So I think if, if the applicant would like to come up or the applicant's representative, we want to discuss whether we can adhere this in conjunction with the twenty sixteen dash sixty-six one. Okay. Could you come up to the? And if you could sign in and tell us who you are.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Jason DeSalvatore. I'm an agent for the applicant, Michael Blackman.
And is Mr. Blackman present here?
Yes.
Mr. Blackman, could you come up and just verify that Mr. Salvatore is indeed authorized to act as your agent?
Yeah, I'm Michael Blackman, application number six sixty and six sixty-one. And kind of both parcels are kind of under the same guidelines. There's no need to separate them.
And, and that this is your agent standing next to you?
Yes.
Can speak on your behalf?
Yes.
Okay. Does the department have any problems with hearing these together? Well, they have separate resolutions, but hearing them at the same time? Okay, then we're going to proceed. The, the department has fifteen minutes. You can stand there or sit down. And you will have a, you have fifteen minutes after that.
All right. Ben Diamond, planner trainee, I'll be presenting appeals twenty sixteen, six sixty, and six sixty-one. Before I get into the presentation, I just want to point out there's a typo on both staff reports and resolutions where it is code section seventeen point nine five one six five four. It should be one six five N four.
N four.
That is a typo with every mention of that code section. That. On June twenty-ninth, Michael Blackman submitted two applications for commercial cannabis cultivation. Twenty sixteen, six sixty for Cali Delta Patients Alliance for twenty-two thousand square feet of mixed light cultivation. And twenty sixteen, six sixty-one for sugar leaf extracts for twenty-two thousand square feet of outdoor cultivation on separate parcels, of course. On August fifth, two thousand sixteen, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board received two NOIs, both for tier-two coverage under the Waste Discharge Program for cannabis cultivation. And both of the parcels are owned by Michael Blackman. The central water board staff decided that the NOIs submitted were incomplete based on the wrong tier size being selected as both parcels were under the same ownership. So they felt it more appropriate that one NOI be submitted for both. And they attempted to contact him on March second, two thousand seventeen, with the phone numbers listed on the NOIs, and they left a message to that effect. The water board did not receive the requested single NOI for both parcels. So the two NOIs that were submitted were terminated on January sixteen, two thousand eighteen. And pursuant to the urgency ordinance, specifically section seventeen nine five one six five N four, the applicants for commercial cultivation were required to demonstrate either prior enrollment with the Waste Discharge Program or that a complete application had been submitted to the water board by September seventh, two thousand sixteen. And as the two NOIs were terminated for being incomplete, the applicant did not submit a complete NOI and is not in compliance with that section of the code. And for that reason, the applications were denied.
Any questions through the department?
Do we have any information as to why the period of time elapsed between March second of two thousand seventeen and January sixteenth of this year before the water board? Send anything out in writing?
We do not.
And do we have anything in writing memorializing this March two, two thousand seventeen phone message?
It's in the notice of termination from the water board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then it's time for the applicant.
So on March second, shortly after, we did receive a phone call, and that actually was received. So I was a little bit confused with the termination letter. I actually had a working relationship with Griffin at the water board.
I'm sorry, could you speak a little more slowly and loudly?
We, I actually had a working relationship with Griffin at the water board. So we did speak with him on the phone regarding this. I believe it was sometime in March. So what he said was that, I don't think it was incomplete, it was more incorrect. We had two different parcels. They've met certain criteria, so we made payments, and we made letters of intent to that effect. So what we, when we received the call, he said it was incorrect. He said to begin with, we're tier three. We needed a complete site management plan. So we contracted a local engineer, Terry Strange, to complete a site management plan for a tier-three cultivation. So we had to pay for the engineering, had him come out. It had to take a while. He had some other projects. It was very busy last spring. A lot of people were doing the same thing. So we'd actually didn't get it completed until July thirtieth. And part of that is Terry also has a really good working relationship with Griffin as well at the water board. So he kind of picked up the ball for me. They had been going back and forth. He had been discussing with him that he was making sure that our site was being managed correctly. In doing so, he gave us a laundry list of, of things that we had to do to make, you know, make sure we upheld our compliance. And we're out there with straw wattles and making sure that any type of drainage is maintained and secured in all those different areas. We had to put out gravel. We upgraded our sheds and our storage area, but, you know, and we wanted to make sure we're compliant with this a hundred percent. So with the notice of intent, it would be a miscommunication on my behalf because we've got, we had the communication, and this entire package has been submitted to the water board as well by Terry, by Terry Strange. So this, this was given to them, so it was my understanding that this would be a replacement of a letter of intent. My, I myself never wrote another letter of intent. And also, when we submitted this, I had spoken with, with Griffin. He said there's going to be a difference because of the rating and the tier, so it's a difference in cost. Like I said, at that time, we had been upgrading. We had a small hardship. The rains last year were very hard on the operation and weren't able to produce. We just had the initial first, first year trying to improve the infrastructure. So our question was, is this, does this do immediately? Are we, are we delinquent? Or is it, you know, and he said, well, no, just, just get it to me when you can. And that was late in summer of, of August. So we had continued to move on with improving our infrastructure and other things at, at the site. And what happened was, is I, I got a letter of termination. So it was, of course, a huge concern to us, and we want to make sure we do everything to, to maintain our compliance. It's a tremendous value to us to make sure that we're working well with, with all the municipalities, not just the, the county. We have been applying for our state licenses as well, and we're continuing to move on with our operation. So when we got the notice, we had already applied. So it was an oh-my-God situation. I called him. I said, what's going on? He said, well, the Regional Valley Water Board can no longer take your application. I said, well, you have my application. I've already given you a deposit, so I know I have to give you a refund. My hands are tied. He's also one of the same players now in the state water board program. Okay? So it's the same players, regional to now state. So what you have to do is you have to reapply through the state water board program. It's a different payment structure. It's a different fee. You can go on and you can do it online. You can give me a call if you have an issue. I didn't. I went in right away, and I, I went in the fifth of February this year, and I applied, turned in our application. I paid the fees. It's the same people. They have a slightly different tier. There is no tier three. There's a tier two, and it's the same size requirements. It's all the same criteria. So that's the tier we fit in now. But I have the proof of payment, and I have the application, and then the application, proof of receivable from the dashboard. I've put in several calls in the last two, three weeks in preparation for this, and all you can do is leave a message. Griffin was out of town this week. That was going to be my lot, hey, can I, you know, can you help me out with this? I haven't gotten anywhere on this application. I want to do it myself. He's out of town all week until tomorrow, and I didn't realize until the beginning of this week. It's on his voicemail. So the, all the supporting documentation I have right now. So I guess to say that this, that it was incomplete, it was complete at the time that we submitted. I think a lot of people had to get their site management plans and things to get their ducks in a row because of the, the time of the urgency ordinance. So we definitely wanted to make sure we were doing that. So I was, like I say, confused about the, the no, no response, no answer, you know, because we've definitely been working. In the meantime, we have paid our taxes and done everything we can to make sure we maintain our compliance. Do we have any questions?
Where's your documentation?
Right here.
Please.
Is that our copy or?
Yes. Does that mean the application, this is the dashboard of the application?
And that's, that's the application for the state?
That's the new state water board. Griffin, the same, same players that were in the regional water board are also running the state water board program.
Now, if I understand it correctly, the, the Terry Strange report was submitted when?
July thirtieth or right around that date, the end of this.
Twenty seventeen?
Twenty seventeen.
But you never submitted a new tier, it would have been a tier one under the old system, or tier three.
Yeah, the tier three.
Tier two. You were, you submitted tier three, and you should have, under the old system, it should have been tier two.
It was two tier twos, and it should have been a tier three.
I'm sorry. Okay.
And I thought that's what we were doing with this. When we gave him this, I thought this site management plan along with Terry, I thought that's what we were replacing. But I guess it was missing. He needed another additional letter of intent, so it was a miscommunication.
What is that? What is it that you keep referring to?
This is a, our site management plan. This is basically operating procedures and best practices to make sure that we are operating in compliance for a tier-three professional cultivation site.
Have you shown that or told the planning department about that document's existence before this moment?
No, sir.
And does that make clear that both parcels are covered?
Yes, sir.
By that report?
Yes, sir.
You, you were under the impression that by submitting that, you were complying with what the problem was with the regional water quality control board?
Exactly, exactly.
That you were now submitting for both parcels and the tier that they said it should be.
There's so many municipalities that we, we navigate in the cannabis industry to make sure you maintain compliance. So we were under the impression that with the planning department, with our application, we're compliant. We have to maintain our compliance with the regional water board, which is what we feel where we were doing.
Just out of, out of curiosity, will that report be appropriate under the? Just out of, out of curiosity, will that report be appropriate under the state program?
Yes.
Or do you have to, okay.
Yes.
And has the board, has the Water Board said that they would accept that report under the state program, or?
Yes, yes. We had to change a couple tier twos to tier threes and a couple little bit of text, but the same operating procedures and guidelines are all the same.
So you have had communications with the state Water Board, the same person?
Yes.
But the state Water Board about what changes were needed, and they have been made to that document?
He's the one that instructed me and actually gave me the, let me know what to do to maintain compliance with the state Water Board, to be able to reapply and, and the application process, he's very. He said, and the way he described to me, he said, Jason, my hands are tied. I said, I can't process, now the state came down, and it's not like they said, hey, in two weeks, we're going to do this. He gets an email and says, stop processing any applications. So we were in, we had already made a payment, our, what I thought was our notice of intent was done, but he says that, that this is not our notice of intent. So I thought, well, we gave you a site, tier three site management plan, he said, I know, Jason, but technically, that's not your letter of intent, and I understand. So, so that's what I, when, when Terry was taking over, that was the miscommunication that, you know, a, a, a plan of this nature and the size for a tier three cultivation that, that outlines both properties and all our practices, and I thought 100% what they were looking for. And like I said, to your point, I never received anything in the mail. You know, when you get a tax bill, you get a due date, and it's late, or it's invalid after the date. He said we weren't in, we weren't delinquent, was my understanding. It, it just wasn't finalized. And our application in my, but for my, my interpretation was that it was, our application was complete, and that our payment at that time was. But based on the, there was an error, you know, in that, in that case, so. Would you like, would the, would the?
Is that something we can have, or?
I could get, I could, absolutely, I could get another copy, no problem.
I think it might be important for that to be a part of the record, since it's, you are saying it's the equivalent of a new application.
Absolutely, well, it's not the equivalent of application. What I'd like to make clear to the commission is that this is our site management plan. In order to have a tier three cultivation, it's the largest scale cultivation, you know, we have two adjacent parcels, two half acres, the disturbed area is greater than one acre. So they want to make sure when you're disturbing that much area, that much surface area, that you're, you're retaining the water adequately, that you're using all your best practices. So this wouldn't have been required for anybody on a tier two or a tier one. So once we had that large size, but that basically, when Terry had picked up the ball, I had been CC'd on a couple emails that they were, he was going to communicate with him for that on me, and then he submitted this. He gave me my hard copy, and he gave Terry, Griffin a digital copy. So if it pleases this commission, I could give you a digital copy, I could give you the hard copy.
What special for the department?
I would say a digital copy is probably better than a hard copy.
Is there somewhere that I could email or send that to?
And that digital copy will reflect the changes that you've made persistent, consistent with?
I can send, what, I can send a package, I can send a copy of this, as well as digital copies of those forms, as well as a, a brief description.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the, the changes that have been made to that report to comply with what the Water Board is requiring you to do.
I understand, absolutely.
Okay.
Those updates? Okay. Because actually, Griffin said this would be adequate, I'll have to communicate with him if he actually wants me to revise that, because he still has this, I believe, in our file, and if he wants any other changes that would make it more suitable for the, the state Water Board, and that's very simple.
If, when you submit that digitally, why, in your email with that copy, why, explain?
Absolutely.
What, what the status is of what you're submitting?
Okay, I can outline that all. Is there a, the best email I should send that to? You got it? Okay, appreciate it. So I'm sorry for the miscommunication, if I didn't realize we had a hangnail out there, I apologize.
Okay, I've, I've got some questions. When you submitted the original two NOIs, they were for tier two, and there was no site management plan required, is that correct?
That's correct.
Then you got the phone call in March, saying that you had basically had to aggregate them, which meant that you'd be tier three. So then you had a site management plan prepared?
Yes.
And when was that given to the state Water Board?
That was given, it's, this was completed and dated on the 30th, I, I, I have, I had to check my emails to see when Terry submitted it, I want to say it's on the 30th or right there around the 31st or the 1st.
Of what month?
Of the July, of July, August of this year, or of 2017. Like I say, Terry, we had gotten the call in March, I had put in a call into Terry, and he was working on, I believe, his own property as well, as well as a couple other clients. So it took some, it takes him a while to prepare it, come out, do the site visit, do the, you know, do the walk, take his notes, give us, you know, our instructions, make sure everything gets compliant, prepare his report.
Do you have a copy of that email where the site management plan was sent to the board?
I can, I can, see if I have that right here, I don't have a hard copy printed up.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be able to take something off the face of your phone.
Well, is it on your phone?
What's that?
Is it, is a copy on your phone?
I can, I can check and see if I do have that available, yes.
You can check in and tell us what it says?
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Bear with me just a second. There's actually a follow-up. Here is from Terry Strange to Griffin at the Water Board. Hi, Griffin, the client brought to my attention?
What's the date on that?
This is August 18th, 2017, 10/38.
August 18th of?
August 18th of 2017. This is a correction, this first email I found, because he put in some of his notes, some dates, and he is letting him know that he had to make a correction in his report. Says, the client brought to my attention earlier today that the site management plan submitted for their farm had two typos. The first was that the grading took place in May of 2015, not 2016, as I mistyped. And the corrected phone contact for one of the site managers, Mr. Michael Blackman, please replace your earlier SMP site management plan for Sugar Leaf Extracts and Cali Delta Patients Alliance with the attached revised SMP. I apologize for any inconvenience, and he has, this report is attached to the email.
And when was the original one submitted?
Okay, I believe it's, it's August 16th, same Terry Strange to Griffin. Hi, Griffin, please include the attached site management plan for the Sugar Leaf Extracts and Cali Delta Patients Alliance farm, located at 9903 and 9903 CC1, Comanche Parkway South, Wallace in Calaveras County. There are two gardens, tier three gardens on adjacent properties. Included is a 30-acre parcel, the APN number, and a 10-acre parcel with the correlating APN number. Can you please return a confirmation of receipt via email to both Mr. Jason DeSalvatore and myself to acknowledge that you have received the SMP? Please let me know if you have any questions.
Did you get any email back from the Water Board confirming they'd received these?
Yes, I did, I'm just trying to see if I can find it in the chain. I do remember receiving it, I am having a hard time finding it, but I know Terry doesn't help us right now, apologize. I could forward a copy of this to this email if that helps? Yeah?
It'd be good to have that for the record.
I'm having a hard time finding Griffin's response. What I could do is consult with Terry Strange and see.
Confirmation could have come to Terry Strange.
Directly to Terry, and maybe didn't CC me on that. I do remember speaking with him about it, though, but I have two, on the 16th and the 18th, we sent him an original and a revised copy. I'll forward both emails to this address.
The original applications were actually done in, right, and, and they're Mr. Blackman name, and the new one was in your name, is there a special reason for that?
No, just because I had contracted them, the new, with the new permit?
It's in your name, correct? The application that you passed around that we saw was in your name?
I was, I was just applying for it, we actually put it under Sugar Leaf and Cali Delta Patients, or, we put it in both business names, I was the, the, the person filing for it.
Okay, thank you.
As well act as, as an agent on here, and, and we're partners in the, in the cultivations as well, the corporations.
I wonder if we ought to, at this point, have a discussion with the department as to whether or not we should continue this matter, because it seems to me that we're getting a lot of stuff into the record that the, the department wasn't aware of, is that correct?
We have not received any of this or any communication prior to hearing that.
And as far as the department was concerned, and excuse me for interrupting your presentation, as far as the department was concerned, there was no communication from the applicant to the Water Board after these phone messages were left and, until the denial or the?
The only communication we had from the Water Board was the notice of termination.
Yeah. I don't know, I, I, I'm feeling that we've got, we're kind of going far afield here, and if we think that this evidence is, could be relevant, we might be better off considering it all at a future date.
Well, certainly within your purview to suggest the continuance, it would require the applicants agree to, to continue it. You could also act on if this information is sufficient in your mind to overturn our, felt that there was, you know, they were trying to comply with the Water Board requirements, and just no one was aware of that, that certainly could be grounds for reversing the determination by the planning department. It's really up to you. Or you could decide that it's still, it's not, that's your decision.
No, I, I understand.
Are, are we talking a decision here, or just?
Right, right now, I, I, and this is outside our normal order of, of discussion, I'm just wondering if it's, if the other commissioners feel that this is going to be ripe for decision today, or should we continue it to, to permit the department to consider what the applicant has and, and to permit the, and, and also to check with the Water Board as to what their, what the, their backstory is on this before we make a decision.
Let me ask you a couple more questions.
Okay.
Was there anything else that you understood had to be submitted to the Water Board to comply with a tier three category, other than the SMP that you, that Terry Strange did submit?
No, the only thing that, that, my point that they needed was another payment, and when I had asked him if it were at a point where we were late or delinquent, he said no. So we weighed our options, you know, I don't, I don't want to claim complete hardship, you know, but cannabis cultivators are millionaires, despite what a lot of people think, you know, in order to invest in what we were trying to build here, we want, we wanted to, to be able to make sure we, we had a professional and successful operation. If at any point we thought that we were delinquent in any way, we would have bent over backwards twice to make sure we were compliant. And, and like I said, when we got a letter of termination, it was complete, of a complete surprise. You know, I had just talked, spoke with, with Griffin a few months prior, we had just paid, it was in January, so we were just preparing to pay our next round of taxes, which we had, had paid in January. So we, you know, we were just trying to, to, to weigh the next hurdle in front of us, and if we thought that that was something that would put us out of compliance with the county, then we would have done what we could have, or found a way.
Have you been able to find any email confirmation that the Water Board received the SMPs?
I have not, I'm confident that there is, I would probably have to communicate with both Griffin and Terry Strange. I'm confident Terry has a reply email, he's very professional, you know, and he had already had some communication, I don't know why, in my chain, because I think maybe because I'm CC'd, he may have just replied back. I'm gonna have to communicate with him on that, so I'm sorry, I'm not prepared with that.
Okay, after you submitted the SMPs, or Terry did in August of 2017, did you get anything back from the Water Board saying, this isn't enough, you need to have a new NOI, or anything else suggesting that you were not in compliance?
We never received any communication via telephone, email, or, or mail saying anything or any type of bill notification or anything.
Okay, and then you got, you got the, the notice of termination letter from the Water Board in January of this year?
Yes.
At that point, then, you could only apply to the state board, because that was the new program, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you applied on, what, January, or February 5 of this year?
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason you didn't include the updated new application to the state board when you filed your appeal with the, with the commission on February 6?
No.
I mean, it's not mentioned in your appeal letter?
No, I, I was just trying to basically get our ducks in a row, I understand, I hadn't, I don't want to use any excuses, no, I, I, I hadn't had a chance to prepare that for an adequate response.
Have you heard anything back from the state Water Board about the submission that you sent in on February 5 of this year?
Other than the confirmations through the web portal, that's all I was able to receive. If you call the numbers that are available, there's two, there's one for the use irrigation, and there's one for, for registration, I, or for the small irrigation and for registration. I've called both and left several messages, I've sent in emails, those are your only options, there's no live person to receive other than reaching out to, to Griffin. So I've done that in the past couple weeks to be able to, to, to show a certified, some type of, I don't know if there's a form or something that shows it's completed, all I have is the application and what's pending on there. So I, I've tried to, to bring any, utilize any of the resources I can to show what we've paid and applied.
And you're the one who submitted this new application on February 5, not Terry Strange?
No, I, I did personally. It was done online, and it was, Griffin gave me the information to do it, I contacted him once we received the letter, and he, he gave me the instructions. And when I talked to Griffin, just to make a, a note, he said, you know, Jason, my hands are tied, I, you know, there, there, he's busy as it is, he's got tons, you know, across the state now that he's dealing with, so it's just another compliance issue, but he said, I can't, I couldn't process this. Once I got the notification is when the line stopped, no other applications.
Notification of?
Basically, from the state came down and said, all regional water permits are done, everything is going through the state board now. So if you have anything pending or anything that's not 100% complete, it drops off. I said, well, I've already paid, well, we're giving you a refund.
When you, when you submitted the February 5 application this year, was it one application covering both parcels?
Yes, sir.
And is it, is it a? And is it, is it a tier three?
They don't have a tier three, which was to my surprise.
Whatever the new equivalent is of tier three.
Yeah, absolutely. It's actually now there's different, there's like three levels of a tier one and two levels of a tier two, and we're a higher of the tier two. It's anything excess of one acre of disturbed area. So, if you add the two twenty-two thousand square feet plus, you know, a little bit area around, we just barely exceed an acre, so that's us.
Do you, I don't, this is an unfair question. Do you have, can you explain what the water board did as far as sending out the, the denial? Have you ever had a chance to discuss that with your contact at the water board?
Yes, and that's what I mean. He, um, he got notification from the state saying that all, anything you have in the system, you have some that are complete, you have some that are pending, whatever the case may be, you're not allowed to process anymore under the regional water board. It has to be under the new state program.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, the actual denial that, that the...
Do I have a copy of it?
No, is that, did they send out denials to everybody whose, whose application was pending or this, I mean, our understanding from the record we have is that the denial was because of no response to their...
No, no, no. It was, it wasn't because of a response, it wasn't because of an infraction, it wasn't because of being, um, um, or have some type of violation or anything of that nature. It was simply that we had paid a portion of it. Since we went from a tier two to a tier three, there was a pending balance. I had got a verbal confirmation from Terry, uh, from, excuse me, Griffin, saying that we weren't delinquent. There was no due date. And that was where his was like, it's, you need to pay us. It's not due, it's not due tomorrow. And like I say, I, I never, I don't have any type of bill. When I receive a tax bill, there's a date. We're absolutely one hundred percent pay our bills, you know? But we're also, like you say, we have to, have to weigh what you can afford at a given time and pay what's pressing. And, and he wasn't pressing at the time. And if I thought that was something that would put us in jeopardy with the county, never would have taken the gamble.
Our understanding is that the, uh, the NOIs submitted by the appellant were terminated because the regional water quality control board had not received the requested information. If, if I understand you correctly, you're saying it was terminated because all pending applications were terminated and it was starting going, going, moving to the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think maybe it's time for us to hear back from the department and then you'll have a chance to come back up.
Okay, so I think so.
Yeah, yeah. And as far as the commission goes, my, lingering up there in the cloud somewhere is my thought that this might be an appropriate, uh, uh, hearing to continue, but I, I think, I think we ought to continue, see what we can mine today as to, as far as the facts go, and then see if the commission feels that...
I, I would have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could.
Of, of the applicant?
Yeah. Do you, can you have, grab while you can the, the notice of termination?
Yes.
January sixteenth.
It's on the last page of your packet for this.
Uh, January twenty-second?
January sixteenth, sixteenth of January of eighteen, from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. Well, I'll, I'll just tell you, let me ask you a question first. I thought I heard you say that there was a phone call in March of seventeen telling you that you needed to combine your applications into one.
Yes, sir.
Okay? You, I think you also told us that somewhere in July, perhaps August, that you submitted the site plan to them.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Correct? And when you submitted the site plan, you also amended the application or you did some other paperwork?
No, no, we had to amend the site plan because there was some incon, there was some, some of it was incorrect. So, we had to resubmit it, it was submitted twice.
Okay, so in this letter, what I was trying to get you to read, and I'll just read it to you.
Thank you.
It says, and I'll summarize a little bit of it, the second, or the third, I guess the third paragraph, "Central Valley Water Board staff had originally determined that the NOI was incomplete due to incorrect tier size based on the parcels being adjoining and owned by the same landowner. On second of March, two thousand seventeen, they attempted to make contact and left a message at the phone numbers provided on the application. Staff requested that a single NOI be submitted." This is March second of two thousand seventeen.
Yes.
Under the appropriate tier for both parcels. To date, the Central Valley Water Board has not received their requested information." So, they're saying, I think what they're saying is that you had not submitted either an amended application or the site plan as of January sixteenth of two thousand eighteen.
Um, what he said is he didn't...
That's completely different than what you've told us.
What he said, what I believe he says is he didn't receive the letter of intent? Is that, if I'm not incorrect?
It just says, "To date, the Central Valley Water Board has not received the requested information, semicolon, therefore, your NOI has been terminated." So, it does...
That's where, that's where I'm confused because all this has, has been submitted. I did speak with, with Griffin and he's had, he's had communication with our engineer, he's had communication with this. The only thing that is my understanding that he has not received was the balance that was expressed to us that was not delinquent.
The money.
The money.
And, and I think the, the actual new NOI...
I believe, and that I'm still confused. If this subs, you know, because that's where my understanding with it, he says that he, he requested in the letter a new NOI. And when he says he didn't receive the requested information, but really what they didn't receive, I believe, was that, that the balance due and this is a pretty elaborate notice of intent to me of what we're doing there. I mean, there's site plans, there's irrigation plans, there's, uh, it just topped about it, it's very elaborate on what we do there. So, a notice of intent, I mean, one page saying that we want to have a tier three cultivation seems a little redundant. Now, if that's technically what they need, I would, doing this, writing a half a page to say what our intention is, not a problem.
This paragraph is so different than what you're telling us.
I understand a hundred percent, sir. I, I, I do.
I'm sort of leaning towards you. I mean, you're here to testify. This person isn't. But it is, even the phone calls, it sounds like, he doesn't quite say it, but it implies that you never even telephoned them.
I'm not making excuses and I'm not passing judgment on anyone because I actually, I like Griffin a lot. But I do know that just if you consider Calaveras alone, he has his plate full. If you look at the whole state, I know he's very full. So, to get your wires crossed with us and other cultivations wouldn't be out of the realm of a possibility.
Very tastefully stated.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Following up on what Commissioner Bocelli was asking you. It says, "Staff requested that a single NOI be submitted under the appropriate tier for both parcels." Now, I think you told us earlier that you did not submit a new NOI. Is that correct?
Um, correct.
Okay, what you did do was you submitted a site management plan which was required under tier three but not under tier two.
Yes.
Was there a reason why you didn't submit a, a new NOI covering both parcels?
Yes.
What's the reason?
I thought that was part of the scope of work of this report.
Part of what?
I thought that was part of the scope of work in this report.
My understanding is, is that he, he believed that this took the place of that form. This has all the information in it that that form would have. He didn't believe that this form, uh, the next separate form was needed.
I thought this was a really big notice of intent. It's my, it was my error. And it's, see, it, in my layman's terms, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me. You know, and we wanted to do our best, you know, to, um, to make sure we were following all the guidelines, make sure we put an adequate plan together, we hired an engineer. Um, I'm not capable of putting this together. Terry was very good at what he does. So, I want, I, I, that's, that was my understanding. No, it was incorrect, but it was, definitely wasn't, um, something that we, we thought we had taken care of. We thought we checked that box.
Okay, who, in, in March of two thousand seventeen, who was it that talked to the water board on the phone?
That was myself. And actually, I believe there was more than one conversation. I believe, Mike, you spoke to him as well, correct?
Okay, my question is, did whoever talked to the water board, were they told by the water board that you needed to submit a single NOI? Or were you told that you needed to submit a site management plan?
That was the basis of the conversation, was, that was, that was the focus, was that you've, here you've got two different permits, you guys, but you really have one landowner, you have a larger project, even though they're not adjacent, they're pretty adjacent. So, you're great, you're, you're taking over one larger area and you're gonna need to go with a full site management plan, you're gonna need to tear up, and that was the focus. I said, "Okay, well, we're gonna need to hire an engineer." He gave a recommendation of some local people that he was aware of. We ended up going with Terry. Terry said he was just gonna pick up the ball for me and communicate, which he had been doing, you know? He said, um, so I, I had faith that we were doing the right thing, that everything was moving forward smoothly. When I got the, the emails that he was forwarding everything over and he had already, I, um, I have another one as well that's, it was an introductory email. "Hey, this is Terry, I'm, I'm picking up the ball, we're, we're, we're gonna write a site management plan." He had another project and I think he was going to Hawaii or something. And he said, "When I get back in July, we're gonna jump on it." So, um, and just I had, I had to let him facilitate that, that portion of it because that's what he was good at.
Did you guys use emails at all to exchange information?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's why...
So, you should have a long series of emails.
I have multiple and I, I could, I could show you. I have the individual one, but I believe he was CCing me on, so I don't have a response and I don't think he responded to both of us. So, I have the emails from Terry Strange to Griffin at the water board. You can see the, the emails that they were sent and the date stamped.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear from the department.
Okay, once again, you, you'll have a chance for rebuttal. So, department, it's a whole new world there, but is it a whole new world from your point of view?
Based on what's been presented, it sounds as if the appellant may have fallen prey to this transitional period from the regional program to the state program. We have had other situations where if your notice of applicability still hadn't been issued and you weren't fully enrolled under the regional program, that you would be terminated and then would have to apply under the state. And it sounds that because the appellant was still in process under the original program, that the NOIs could have, at least in part, be terminated because by the time the new program started, they hadn't been issued the final notice of applicability and couldn't be because that program was done. And it sounds as if they might have been caught between that.
You were not filled in with any facts from the, what, what you have from the water board is what you had in the termination...
He had only received the notice of termination.
Right.
What Kelly pointed out is a notice of determination is, I'm sorry, it might be a joke. Sorry, ma'am. It was dated in March and in January, quite a few months later, nothing was turned in. Wasn't a matter of a month or...
The phone call was in March, the termination came in January of this year.
Right, so they, and he said they both spoke to him. He believes they both spoke to him in March. That's quite, that's a long time away from January. It wasn't completed.
But they, what we have from the appellate, well, this can go into our discussion, but let's, let's, let's go. Any specific questions for the, for the department?
Oh, yeah, I have a question for the department. I'm a little unhappy that all of this information arrives here today when it should have arrived here some days ago anyway, if not with the original appeal letter. Having said that, would the department have an objection to continuing this matter so that all of this material that's been referred to verbally, most of which is not in the record in writing, could be submitted and we could take a look at it?
I have no objections to that.
I, I don't either. I guess, look, one question I have is, is it the intent of the commission that if there is sufficient information for the department to reverse this decision, should we go ahead and do that or do you want it to come back regardless of what we might find?
Well, I think, I don't think it's a question of the department reversing its decision because that decision was based under the old program which doesn't exist. And so, the question now will be whether the state board is going to have a problem with the new submission that went in on February five of this year.
Well, I think our, our basis of denial is not whether or not they comply with the new requirements, is it appeared that they were notified in March and nothing happened until Jan, January. What I'm hearing from the appellant is that they were working with the water board and felt that they were in compliance and, you know, proceeding. And if that were the case, we probably would not, if we had documentation of that, we probably would not have denied it.
And that's why I'm suggesting we continue this matter for a couple of weeks.
And I think...
So that he can, we can get this into the record in a timely fashion so you can consider it and we can consider it.
But, and, and the fact that the planning department can consider it, I, I would have no objection if the department decides that, given the facts as it now learns them, uh, if they want to, uh, withdraw this rejection of the, of the permit, I have no objection to that. That, we've had that before with a department as, as withdrawn, uh, whatever the appropriate term is.
Rescind.
Rescinded. That, but it seems to me that it's, this isn't ripe for a decision today, particularly, looking ahead to possible problems, that we have to have three votes to make any decision anyhow, um, for, under, under the, uh, ordinance governing the planning commission. So, um, I think that's another fact that we might have in mind in continuing this. And with a request that the applicant and the department work together to develop the facts, and then if the department wants to rescind, uh, so be it. If not, I, then we'll consider it with the whole commission. I'm, so I guess the, we've heard that the department would have no objection to a continuance. Would the applicant have an objection to the continuance? Or do you have any questions of us as to what we're talking about?
I, no, I don't. Um, the applicant may, um, but no, I mean, I don't have any objection to the matter.
Well, you want to check with the applicant?
How much time do you think you would need to get all this documentation?
Um, Griffin's back in town, uh, per his message, on Monday. Um, he's out of the office through tomorrow. I don't, I think I shouldn't have a problem. I mean, the deadline, like, next Friday, I should probably have everything due Monday, Tuesday.
What we, what we have in mind was that, that you would share everything that you can with the department. And I understand, we, we better put a cushion in there so that if Griffin is, comes back and then he's super busy and can't deal with your particular...
I would appreciate a buffer there. I mean, I'll, I'll make sure it's first priority to get you all the information.
So, let's, what, what do you, what would be a comfortable...
If you could give me fourteen days, that'd be fine, but I'll make, I'll make, let you know, make an effort to get you early this week.
Yeah, myself, I think we'd need more of a cushion than that, hearing what the water board...
Thirty, thirty days would be helpful, whatever you think is, is, is prudent. I beg, you can't be choosers, I wanna make sure we're working with...
Okay, so, um, the next...
We've never been confronted with a, with a... So, so the, the next hearing would be April twelfth, which is three weeks from today. Do you want us to bring it back on that, that date?
Or the, or the next...
Or the, or the one, uh, next one would be the twenty-sixth of April.
Okay, and is that scheduled full already for the twenty-sixth? Okay. So, we have agreement by both the applicant and the department to continue... So, we have agreement by both the applicant and the department to continue this case to, to April 26 hearing. Then, we will, I will entertain a motion to that effect, and...
It was so moved.
It's been moved. Did we have a second?
I'll second it.
Just for clarification on the motion, does that include planning department ability to rescind its action and not come back, or do you want it to come, absolutely want it to come back regardless of what we find?
That, would you like to include that in your motion?
I would think you automatically...
Yeah, that's what I would too, but...
Not necessarily, not necessarily. I mean, if you say you want...
And I'll amend the motion to include the option for the planning director to rescind the...
Denial.
You can just say it's action.
His previous decision.
Okay. And if you second that?
I second that as amended.
All right. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm going to oppose, I want to say why I'm going to, I want to oppose it.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry.
I want to oppose it, because this is setting a precedent for us, I believe, that when he sent in his letter, I believe that he should have sent in his letter and brought the proof with him today. It is not fair to every other applicant that comes in after him to say, "Well, I did bring it in, but you give me another month, or you give me another 30 days, whatever. I will have that information for you." It was his responsibility to bring that with him today and give it to us ahead of time, and he did not.
Thank you.
And I actually agree with her, but I still think you need the continuance. And in case you're not aware, today's your trial day. This was your trial. Don't go into a trial and say, "Oh, Judge, I have a few pieces of paper at home, going to come back, going to re..."
It's not a good look.
It's, yeah, it, it puts us on the spot. I think, I think now that you've stated that, I want to do the vote again. I'm voting the same way, but on the pending, the pending, it's still a pending motion.
Point of order, you've already taken a vote.
Yeah, we've taken a vote. Unless we do reconsideration, we don't know. Okay. The vote is done. It's continued to the date in April that we've stated, what was it, 24th?
26th.
26th.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That was for both, correct?
Yes, for both.
Got to stay dry out there, huh? All right. Let me find the agenda. There we are. So, are, are there any informational items? Any informational items? And study session, none? Commissioner reports? How are things out in the Hamillons?
Well, I had the opportunity to go south the last few days, reading the Newport Beach newspapers, all about their planning commissions in Huntington Beach, and they're, they have the same problems we do. Amazing.
I guess, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that.
The details vary, the issues are the same.
Yeah. So, there's no further business of the Commission? The Commission is adjourned at 12:00?